Good morning. I will call to order the meeting for the Chase County Commissioners for July 14th, 2025. Everyone will please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have our warrants. Any questions on any bills or anything? I'll make a motion to approve the warrants for July 14th, 2025. Then moved and seconded. All in favor say aye. Motion carried. We have our minutes from our July 7th meeting. Everybody have a chance to look those over? Are there any additions or corrections? I'll make a motion to approve our minutes for July 7th, 2025. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye. Take care. We have a change order. It's the name address change to owner. We have a change order. It's the name address change to owner. Questions on that? I'll make a motion to approve change order two thousand twenty-four dash twenty-five. Second. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question about that. So those change orders are basically from the tax year and not the calendar year, so that's why they're twenty-four change orders, right? Okay.
Yeah.
We need to go back and double check our minutes on June sixteenth, because I think we reflected change order twenty-five, twenty-three, and twenty-five, or twenty-four, twenty-three, and twenty-four, twenty-four as twenty-five year change orders on those minutes. So if we could maybe make a motion to amend the change orders previously approved on June sixteenth from twenty-five dash twenty-three to twenty-four, twenty-three, and twenty-five, twenty-four to twenty-four, twenty-four. I think that we could correct that in this particular. Does that make sense to everyone?
Yeah.
I think we just had a scrivener's error where we had the calendar year instead of the tax year.
Okay.
Well, this would be. Just so you guys can see what I'm talking about there. Because those would be the same, right? Those should be twenty-fours.
Yes.
Okay. I don't think it's necessary to pull the change orders. We've already approved those orders. I think we just need to have the record correctly reflect that the change, unless the numbers on the change orders were wrong, and then we probably do need to adjust it, but.
I don't think you need to.
Because the orders were discussed in the meeting.
Make sure we see how the others are. I can't remember if you use twenty twenty-five or you twenty, if you use tax year number or you, I don't, you're changing these to twenty twenty-four.
That's, that is appropriate to wait if we're not sure.
If that's the way, all of them have been done before, then we, then we create a bigger problem.
And I wouldn't have thought that until he just said twenty-four on this one. Because what was your number, twenty-four, one?
Twenty-four dash twenty-five.
So that, that would be in line, I think.
Yeah, the dash twenty-five would be.
Take ten seconds.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Sorry to derail. I just, while, while we were on another change order, I thought we might address that. I haven't looked at the historic minutes. I'll check and see if other change orders.
Twenty-four, is that correct?
Yes.
Uh, no, it's. Where I did this. Sneaky, you want a second motion then?
Correct. Yeah. Correct the minutes.
I'll make a motion to amend the minutes June sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Motion to approve change order twenty twenty-five dash twenty-three by Hazelton Miller, three oh. And motion to approve change order twenty twenty-five dash twenty-four by Hazelton. Seconded by the line.
And Commissioner, if you are doing those, there is one other scrivener's error. I think if you're just going to amend the minutes, I think that the warrants, there's just a scrivener's error where it reflects those to be twenty twenty-three. That was obviously twenty twenty-five, so include that in, in the amendment. Yeah, yeah, amendment of the minutes.
And so to change the, the, the change orders were signified by twenty twenty-five as the initial number needs to be changed to twenty twenty-four to reflect the consistency of the our change order system. And motion to approve the warrants. The date is six sixteen, twenty twenty-three. That needs to be changed to six sixteen, twenty twenty-four.
You got all that column. You would just, I will second that. It's been moved and seconded to amend the minutes from our June sixteenth meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Column here's two change orders.
Like, it's not working online. Yeah, I get it. I got it fixed now.
We have a letter here from Scott Harris for the appointment of Kira Gedberry as the Assistant Service Director to the Chase County EMS, Detective seven twenty-five, seven fourteen twenty-five. I'll make that a motion. It moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Morning, Matt.
Florida, come on up here and. Okay, I just have for you your leases of your, the lease, not leases, that you approved for the dump truck. So I got two copies, one for you guys to keep and one for me to take if you so inclined.
Okay.
The exact same document we used for the graders, just change in the collateral and the amortization charge, same rate even. So no changes in this document other than what we, from what we did last time.
Okay.
And then I think you have an amortization chart that we sent to you when you did it, correct?
Yeah.
Think we, we gave them, I think you picked up that check last, whatever dates on there. Last week you picked up a check to give to the vendor. And I see the truck when I drive by, so it must be here.
We've already made a motion on that.
Yeah, so yeah, it reflects in there. You approved that on six thirty. It reflects that in the lease that you, that's when it was approved. Okay. I'll leave one of these with you. You already said. Anything else I can do if you get a one? That's it for today. Always have to make sure, so thanks. We greatly appreciate you guys working with the local banks on this. I'm just, we're glad to be able to keep this local. Appreciate it.
Thanks, man.
You bet. Thank you. Someone coming from the historic. There you go, this app. So we're, we'll do this. But looks like it's a two.
I get that document back, Matt.
I gave it to Connie so she could see.
That's why I just wanted to make sure. That's what I, that was the, the next. I just wanted to let her know what I was looking at on there.
Seventy-one.
Oh, no, 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 not, not that, the, the minutes that we're.
Because this is.
Yeah.
I showed.
Do we get anything back from?
I believe that some, yeah, I think they, they.
Yeah, as long as you have it, just so you could see what I was looking at.
They have in the past. On Scott Wilsley's wages and the symphony, they have reimbursed us in the past. Some of his time.
I'll make a motion to approve the additional hours for the emergency manager. Twenty-five hours in the month of May. And seventy-one hours in the month of June. And this is for hours beyond his appointed chart time position. If, that we previously agreed on.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
No. Good morning.
Good morning.
I have a budget for each of you. And then there's a little thing attached to the back. One of you has researched that we've done for people and one of you has highlights to be here and. I appreciate you seeing me this morning. Lovely. Hi. Anyway, we appreciate the money that we get from the, from the county, our appropriation. If you look at our budget, you'll see that your appropriation is the majority of our income. And so we'd like to keep that money steady. It keeps our, it's our operating money for the year. We don't have, we don't have a money-making project per se, so you're our money-making project. We appreciate that. Anytime we do, you are, for our operating year is, that's what your money is for. We've done some bigger projects, but they all have to come from community fund money or grants. And that money isn't always guaranteed. Just because you apply doesn't mean you're going to get it. So then you're, we're starting a renovation on the second floor, which is big for us on the USDA building, not the bank building, but the other one. It's a big, it was supposedly a ballroom, but we're going to shore up the floor and do some renovations in there so that we can display more things. We have a lot of things that are really nice and it would be nice to have them all out.
Sure.
So our second big project is going to be a book five of the Chase County Historical Sketches. There hasn't been a book put out since nineteen eighty-four, which is a long, that's a lot of history to put in a book. But we have a lot of people that aren't, that haven't ever been in a book. I don't know about, about any of you, but we'll be seeing you about being in the book. So, but those are our bigger projects. And that's all I have, unless you have a question.
You're asking for the twenty-eight thousand two hundred and fifty?
Yes.
Any more questions? We're working on our budgets.
I know. I know. And I know it's nearly time.
Everything you do down there, it's.
Thank you. It's, it's, it's a great building. We have a lot of history in that building. It's too bad we don't have some kind of newspaper or something with printed. We don't have any way to have Commissioner minutes. I mean, we do, but we don't, you know, you. I know you. But really, we don't have a paper that prints that or school board minutes or anything like that that is history. You know, things that you discuss. It would be nice if we could produce that, but we can't. So we have to depend on donations and, and that's our history, Chase County. So. Appreciate it. Guys?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You guys want to do a nine-minute executive session?
Sure.
Sure.
Okay. Four. Actually, let's do. Let's do mitigation of potential litigation.
We're kicking you out. Yeah.
Only nine minutes. Eight.
There you are, that's now.
Looks like mine got one last night, too.
Make a motion, go executive session. Coming back out at nine thirty for all stations with attorney for matters of relating to mediation of possible litigation.
Second. Been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Clerk, just say.
Just a second. No action taken? Good morning. You are.
We've entered everything in there like everybody requested, except for the appraiser didn't turn in a request. So it's last year, except for payroll was two percent. Eyeglasses, well, I can't see without them, so very nice. It's an A H appropriate. So towards the back on page twenty-one, the way we have it in there, in the far right-hand corner, you're setting at seventy-one point eight, one-three mils. Right below that, the revenue neutral rate is fifty-eight point three four five. That, if you recall, is a factor of your, the amount of tax dollars you get is the tax assessed value times your levy rate equals a tax dollar. Because your tax assessment went up. That R and R rate represents your new tax assessed value times your R and R gets your exact same dollars as last year. No increase, just the exact same dollars. So your R and R rate is fifty-eight and your proposed rate right now is seventy-one. That would require a lot of tax. Five, five million, page twenty-one, five million, almost five point one. Last year at this time, you did four point one. So you're quite a bit over where, where you ended up last year. So to enter, mind you, if you're setting on a hundred thousand dollar house, it assesses it eleven point five. We're going to pretend twelve because it's easier math. So one mil is twelve dollars. So that'll be the same, you know, I don't know what your other entities or domain schools, township, cemeteries, or anybody else, but that's kind of a, an idea of what's going to stay with that. And that's going to be, I wish to say this name. Where you want to start? We put services for elderly at one point five, where it's been, special roads, special bridge, two, two mils. That was the math on those. And the general funds up, about nine mils, road and bridges up, three and a half. The county health, there's no levy, we've looked at that. It looks like you kind of clarified that contract this year, so everybody now knows for sure what's going on. So we think you'll be able to scorch by for a year there without a levy and that wouldn't have enough funds from tax levies for this year. Your stuff is in there, too, so, yeah.
Do you have one more?
Yes. Everybody else is good, right? Okay. So obviously, road and bridge and general fund are the ones that make a difference. The whole rest of this budget makes a difference, too, the detention, everything else. But as you recall, the only thing you can't change after probably July twentieth, other than to go down, is the tax levy. You know, you can amend your budget if your detention receipts go up or your special alcohol receipts go up and you get the higher budget to the authority because you're not getting more tax. So now I guess I throw it back to you because I don't know what you all want to do, which one to start with. Our, our district, it's its own entity, so it's at the very back. It has. It came out. It's the last page. They're asking for two hundred and thirty-one thousand, last year it was two oh seven. That is also increasing their levy rate from about three mils to three point two. That one might be easiest to start with because it's small. That's on the very last page. Which they didn't, at least for two thousand and, to me, for the budget, didn't show any transfers to building, which maybe they're done with that to reallocate some of the stuff that was used for building now for equipment potentially. That is on the last page, the very last page, which you have. I'm guessing those aren't cheap. Their, their budget is twenty-four thousand dollars more than last year, expenditure wise. Hi, Cindy Jensen.
Cindy, she's in line, he's our new commissioner, took over for Alan Phipps.
So you don't know much about the budget process. I probably, I just highlighted it and I probably did a terrible job. If you have questions, you know, we can try to figure it out.
Yeah, I think the only concern about the building transfer. In the fall, I, there, issues. Concerned about. So we may be, may have to, that sacrifice for the equipment here may have to be the building transfer. Yeah, we have that twenty-five back in red.
And actually, to the, even though you have line items that say personal services or contractual, the statutes are going to make it so that you can't go over the bottom line, the total total. So they're just for planning purposes, so you can't, you can move around. So if you have a hundred that you want to transfer to building, but it ended the year, you're like, oh, we have a fire truck, that's a problem. You could transfer to the equipment bunch. So it's the total total, not, these are. these are, obviously they're supposed to help, but you're not, you're not, you're not stuck with that particular line item. It's just the totals.
Could you say, say what you just said one more time?
So the, the line items that say personal services, contractual, transfers, those are just for budgeting tools.
Right.
At the, the bottom line, the total total is what you can't go over. So if you're under on salaries, you can transfer more or vice versa. If you're over on salaries, maybe you transfer less, if that makes sense. So it looks like the valuation of, of the fire district is 67 million and change. So you're talking, not a big, big increase on that. I mean, some of the tax bearers, so, but you're only going from 3.2 to 2.9. So the actual tax dollars are not big.
Why don't we have that on this?
Our district's its own thing. It's, it's, so it's a sheet before, yeah. A second to the last page.
No.
Did you find it?
So if you guys want to make a note, just something to think about when you're going through. Since Matt reflected here, I still have a little turn about leaving that 25 transfers from the building out. So it's a conversation to have before we finish this process.
Now, if you want to skip to Roden Bridge first or General Fund. Obviously, General Fund encompasses a lot of the levy.
Let's stick to the, let's not go to that one. Especially for Jane's first time and all that's involved there. Let's stick to, let's go one at a time.
Okay. A little bit smaller, okay. So actually, let's just start. Like page 11. So your mental health, it's a cross ones, right? So your mental health, you're levying to pay your cross ones. It's the bottom one, 14, six. I think that's about the same as what it's been. So the tax levy there is just to cover, cover that. The one above it is a special road fund. In the past, you put two mils in that and that two mils get you, is $142,000. That's literally the math involved on that. So that can be used for Roden Bridge projects.
And that one's statute, right?
That's the, I believe that's the limit. And honestly, I didn't look it up to make sure it hasn't changed this year, but I don't remember seeing anything come across. So two mils was the, was the, the limit. And then the page before, special bridge, also at two mils. And those, yeah. Those likely can't go up, but should you not need them, they could go down, which seems like everything's expensive on roads. I think I read you had some bridge issues, right? The page up above that's the services for the elderly. That one, we left at 1.5, which is where you typically have been. But that's also statute. The, the, your expenses down there exceed your income. So the budgetary transfer from detention excess is only to make it so that you can get to 1.5 mils and no more. Because before that, you were much higher than that on the mil rate, mil levy rate. That makes sense. I haven't lost everybody yet. Never lost a best trade. Page nine is the bottom is accounting health. And we talked about that. There was so much unknown. I'm trying to figure out how the money was going back and forth. It has apparently been resolved. We thought you probably would be fine this year without levying any tax on that. It's usually, it's only going to be 12,000 anyway, but it looked that like you should be fine. The fair building above that, that would be your annual appropriation to the folks for the fair building. When we were looking at it, it looks like in 2024, the second payment miss, may not have been made to them. That's why there's one payment in the 2024 column and three in the 2025. That's why it looks like it went down. It did not. Miss Paige, is Roden Bridge, was Tom coming today usually? Hey, Jay, does Roden Bridge? And it's requesting a higher budget than the prior year. You can see. I don't know where we're at. Where we're at. That's a tough line item. Things aren't pretty fluid on that. So with, with that Roden Bridge budget, he would go from 23.379 mils to 26.866 mils. So it'd be a little over three mil, three and a half mil increase if this, this was the budget that you approved.
It went up to what?
It went, it went from 23.379 to 26.866 as it proposed. So it is requiring more. So, and you can see in the middle column, last year you levied just a slight bit under 1.6 million and this budget to fund it would be 1.9 million. Then we get to General. I think I better wait for y'all to catch up. Your other entities increasing within the county. Have they increased significantly? Like the schools, the city. That doesn't make a difference, but kind of nice to know what else you're looking at. And your timeline is short, unfortunately, because Connie has to do a publication to go over R and R, which is unfortunate on the timing. But it is what it is. This makes, the state put a calendar out that's really tight for all the entities. So July 20th is the date that, and because she has to publish how much, what, how much the proposed rate's going to be, or not publish, do a mailer. She'll just have to publish too, but do, do the mailing showing your, your proposed R and R hearing date, which that can have, happen between August 15th and, or August 20th and the, and September 20th. So I think September 15th, you have a meeting. So that would be the logical thing. And if, after the mailers and the publications and all that, you can only go down. So you, you can't, you can't go up. So that is, they made this, this little cycle really tight by doing that.
I just forgot about the R and R being that.
That early.
That early.
It, it really is tough because you just barely get the assessed valuations and you're, you know, having to make some big decisions in a big hurry.
Well, we're, it's pretty easy on solve. Without a doubt, the next season. So that's, we did that last year. After the judge prepared, now is, I have. You understand there's no way it gets to 58.
And the problem with R and R, in my opinion, it doesn't give you any increase. I mean, like, you know, a little bit of cost of living or something.
Right.
I mean, I also understand it's comparing apples to apples. So even though.
Have you provided us with valuations?
So on page 21, it shows the assessed valuation.
Because it's kind of, I mean.
Page 21, this year the preliminary was 71 million. Last year was 68 million. So your valuations went up. I assume that's because your houses all went up and not because you had.
That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
The, the actual.
Yeah, that's on page 21. So your, your preliminary assessed valuation, 71 million. Like, remember we're working off estimates too because the final doesn't come out until like later November.
That's the number.
So.
I wanted to see what makes that number up. I don't want to see the number. I want to see the valuations, what makes it up.
The appraiser question to get more detail oriented. So like, are you talking? Is what comes out as estimates is pretty high level. Like, I have that. I mean, that's obviously the estimates from that. That's what we work off of as far as if you're wanting to know where that valuation's coming from. Can't really help you on that. That's the overall abstract as a now that the appraiser would have in there.
Yeah, they asked, where's it, 71 to rotate the.
Yeah, what, where it's all.
What those dollar amounts are.
Yeah. I think that would be, I don't know. Do you even have anything like that, Connie?
I'm writing in my July estimate.
Yeah, I'd also like to see that. Never really dug in that deep into it. Like, that's from down. Easier to answer questions. Yes. Because I don't sure, that's an Andy. Probably be, of course, just to kind of, maybe pressure for you to go and kind of sit down. One of the things that's interesting to me early on was like public utilities, like how much is that? Comes from.
The state assessed.
Under the state assessed, yeah.
Last, last, last year, the number was 26 million, I don't, 200. What's that state assessed?
27, 27.
So a little bit of it state assessed, which is maybe your utilities type of thing.
And that could be the railroads, you could be the double track. It's now, maybe now on the books. There's, there's any other thing.
Oil and gas were 586 last year.
And it's 361. Down 200,000.
Personal property was 1.2.
1.39.
And real estate's 40,200.
41, 421.
Probably has some new improvements on there for new addition.
348,000.
Stuff there last year was only 100,000. So you apparently had some people do some new improvements?
Yeah.
That's probably, yeah. Everyone lost here. What, last year, is that helpful for you?
Yeah.
I probably have another year in here potentially. So I don't know if you want to jump to the general fund at this point, or are you going to address running rich or do them all together? Or, because then we get into the big, the big general fund, which has everything under the sun.
We can just, let's go to the general.
Okay, so the general starts on six, 6A. The expenses start on the detailed presentation on 6C. So obviously 2004 was what they had off of the general ledger, 2005 is from the 2025 budget, and 2026 is the department head's proposals.
See if I vote on the sheriff's budget.
Okay, all right. Where's that?
I think under commodities are supposed to 39, 49.
Okay.
Actually, it's slightly.
39, 480?
39, 480.
Okay.
There's $10,000 to save.
All right, budget's good. There we go. Thank you.
I tied that to the other Connie, so I think it's probably on the other one too. Yes, and I don't know if they got the, the other sheets too, or.
I think mine has a tab.
Okay.
6C, for this budget for salaries, my proposal was 129, 16.
Was what?
129, 16. It's just that's, if it's what we proposed, if it's a change.
Yeah, I think we made that, I think we, I think we rounded to 120.
That's fine. If you guys, if, if, that, that was my question, is if they were, if it was what we proposed, or if it's something you did, then don't change it.
Okay.
Okay. That was my question, is if it was.
I thought, I thought it was, but maybe you guys have worked on those sheets, because she sent me the sheets that she could work enough of, so.
That, that's fine, Matt. I, I don't have a quarrel with that. I just want to, if, if it was supposed to be the actual proposals, then.
It was defined titles.
Yeah, wrong direction.
Yeah, we should really talk about it.
Which one? 25? Oh, I have 129, 16.
Yeah, yeah.
So I thought it said 129.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, 129, 16.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, I think it was just 120.
So I should change, change that correct for now? So 129, 16?
Unless you, unless, if, if, I, I, I was trying to decide.
You make a better comparison.
Right, so, yeah. Yeah, that, that's fair, but if that, if we're starting with the proposals, then.
Okay. We discussed it last year, remember, like the noxious weed, I think we figured that they would sell the chemicals that, I don't remember what percentage, maybe to adjust that. Long story short, if you adjust the weed chemical expense, we need to probably adjust the sales expense. And I need to double check. Is it Tom anymore?
Here's no.
Charlie's.
Maybe we should check, double check with him to see what that percentage would be. It's not going to make a lot of difference in this scenario. I think, I was saying it was about 80% or something like that. And she sold it at about 80% of cost. She can't make money on the noxious weed department, but she not know that? The state, the state limits what you can charge on it. The neighborhoods are what it is. It's pretty close to cost, but I don't know. And then, of course, they would have chemicals that they would spray generically as well, too.
Right, or some counties do make money on it.
I, my understanding is that that couldn't happen.
Are you sure that statute, statute basically where you have to.
That's what I understand.
Costs, because it begins to promote people to actually take care of.
They actually do it. I hear that it is for, kind of, I got my stuff.
Well, anyway, I should be able to do, just be able to, any ones that are coming in and buy 20, buying $20,000 chemicals, like. You gotta buy more than, you know, what the average person would. Let us know here in advance, or, or let us know so we can plan for it, right? I feel like those people know that they're going to be, this is strong, right? You know?
Yes.
I probably.
At some point, if someone, consider make this process a little bit more transparent.
3,000 right now? Yeah, sales already.
I see, I left the noxious weed income the same, but the chemical price went up. I assume that's recent, not necessarily road wide ways and other stuff? Is it, is it safe to assume that I can increase the receipts too if your expenses go up? That you're not, you're not battling other problems? Okay, so I'm going to change that to 72,000 from 60,000 on the noxious weed, so at least it's 80%, which, yeah, on the income side. So on the page 6A, 60,000, we'll put it to 72,000. That's assuming he would make at least 80%. And obviously, I know you use some on county road wide, right aways likely as well, so. That'll help a little bit, not much, but a little bit. 72,000, I did 80% of that chemical cost. I think you recover a little bit more than that typically.
On the. So you put 6C, you put the grant rider, you buzzed that in, and we decided in our last meeting that we were going to continue doing that out of the excess revenue for one more year.
So I need to take it out of this?
Take that out.
Okay.
The confusion might be is maybe she has a, for her tracking in there, has that line item there.
I think it was on initial.
I think does a transfer out of the excess into their pay for it, but not beyond the budget. On 6C? Under courthouse general.
Oh, okay.
Which one did you change to make me look bad?
Well, I just looked for 49, 480, 39, 480. Everybody else has been 2%.
And I did change that on 6, 6D, his, his change.
While you're talking about the latest contractual boots of $15,000 for bottom line, new car cameras. So wish that first year can be paid for in a different budget that I have access to. Or to keep expenses down to what's to be the retirement portion.
Is that important?
What?
Your budget.
What?
For taking you down.
That's not my question.
Under benefits, and then you guys don't have line items, nobody else has line items. Right, that's what I'm saying, but we don't, it's not taken line items and out of each end, but it need, that needs to go on report benefits.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or you're asking P, but why I'm saying that we, that was the song.
Yes.
I, I, maybe reduce it to 30.
35,128 to 30?
Oh, yeah, I have, still, you're in with that. Not knowing how you're, you're, because I'm, I'm some gal. You're 31 even, or?
31, 1, 1.
31, okay.
Sheriff's amount, 757,099 dollars, is that?
757, 099?
Yes.
And although it makes it worse, I probably shouldn't tell you right now. I, I assumed your transfer from detention would remain at 130,000, sorry, in this budget. There's, so there's actually $130,000 transfer from detention in the income side.
The interest, sorry.
Sorry, um, so if I took that out, I made the problem way worse, sorry. You've been putting about that much in there, so that's what I used, but now that I sit here and say it out loud, that might not have been.
I remember last year we did it, I mean, that's.
Like, like two notes or something?
Confusing, because we did those two separate.
Right, yeah.
One half and two.
Yeah, I think you're right, yeah.
And you wrote, you put the one in.
I put the.
As a line item.
Yeah, on the income.
And the other one is still a transfer. There should be one line item and one's a transfer.
The income side on 6A, if you look at that, I left the tran, I didn't put a transfer from detention excess on here, but I did put the 130 that you typically have been doing from detention, which I get is six one way and half a dozen the other, but. So this budget.
I guess, yeah, okay, yeah, so 102 is, was the additional that we decided to do.
Exactly.
That's not there yet.
Correct.
Right, but the one that we kind of planned.
Right.
Is there.
Yes.
Save that for me. Did right now or?
71,000, real quick. Also, hopefully not a problem, but on the employee benefit section, the health was kept at the same level as 2025, but it looks like you've experienced some increases. I'm not sure if that's.
We, we changed to
So that's maybe okay now?
The policy that we went to two years ago, that was, it's, we have a reserve that is building in there. So if we need to go above that amount, will we dip in the reserve? We have like 100, I don't, we're going on 120. I don't know the number, someone.
Okay.
It's 100 and some thousand dollars. 180 is.
He was projecting it being there.
Yeah, so we're, we're coming up on $200,000.
So.
Reserves.
The premium is going to be a little bit leveled in?
We're going to make it that way.
Okay.
That makes sense.
Okay.
Rebecca, we're probably going to be a little while before it's you.
You're fine, I'm just.
I'm just, I'm just.
Okay.
And I need about ninety seconds of your time, so. And I wasn't sharing. Ninety seconds of your time.
To large increase above everybody else's. The next year that.
I don't know. Pushing Tony towards the seat.
Been giving me everything. Shuffle.
You had to repeat what she turned down to. Not just me.
Yes. Numbers.
The what the, what Charlie turned down?
Oh, no, I didn't get that, I just got this.
I just came with one.
Oh, you did? Oh, I could have fallen on the floor and then that's probably. Had to spread shit. I didn't think, I didn't think I picked it up, but I'm like. Yeah, I put it on the table right here. I did not see it in my stack. Should you find it?
Huh? Last time, I said your window too.
You got one? Where'd I go?
Yeah.
Just.
Yeah, I'm fine.
Chief, he checked somebody. It's. Dave, let him. Okay. Take it, take it here with me. Huh?
It's yours, I'm sorry.
I'm on the red track of my file here. Found the red stat.
Yes.
It, it might have been the night before, he sent it to me last year, just a.
One guess.
Yeah, I think there was one. I think.
That was a line. When you go. Oh.
So we're like, well. That's, we kind of everybody figured two percent, that's what two percent.
Above that.
Above that, yeah. Current estimates. That number probably more like five percent. And you could have dropped that.
So we did just have it.
For those little appearance of later.
Okay. He wants. Pick up fun? He wants.
I know they still want to just go back into.
Follow the protocol.
I mean, it's part of the general fund, if you have enough, I mean, you could, I think you can put it on a different, its own fund, I guess.
It was, uh, he just sent it to me.
You could put it in its own, own fund and then track it from that.
I think.
If you all want another fund. But other counties, other counties will have it.
Think of, we can edit that.
We have.
Seventy four.
Yes, report? Or no?
Work for you.
Yeah.
That's when I got it there too, no, it's pretty correct. Let me start fucking.
What?
That was perfect.
Yeah, just about fourteen days ago.
A couple?
All right, Cindy.
Okay.
With the changes in the general.
Okay.
With the sheriff's numbers and that. Then on the register of deeds. Making that seventy four thousand.
Just.
Salaries.
Okay, seventy four.
So the seventy five, one sixty two. You got rid of the grant writer.
I got rid of the grant writer.
Anything else on general?
I.
Gentlemen that we.
I put the county attorney at one twenty nine sixty instead of one twenty.
Okay.
And then I, the grant writer, I reduced his commodities from forty nine to thirty nine.
Yes, I need to understand.
What? Uh, which one?
So.
They said to get rid of it.
It is, it turns over that, it cannot.
Sheriff commodities, that's the next page item.
No.
Yeah.
I've got that at thirty nine and I have this contractual at thirty. Thirty nine, four eighty.
Did like a two percent. Passed the.
I believe so. Whoever has, so we have at the time I have, have them today, we have a decision, we're gonna exceed rate, which means that we aren't gonna be increasing that. We're only gonna be decreasing something.
That's a two percent. That would be different. Questions, Cindy or?
I think those were the changes I had, other than the thirty thousand on his contractual and the thirty nine, four eighty on, that we talked about to begin with, I think there's no other things. The levy rate on the general fund is now thirty eight, almost five, thirty eight point five, and you started at thirty nine point two. Made a little bit of progress. Step at a time.
It's what?
It's right now, it's thirty eight point four seven six.
From?
Thirty nine point two two seven. I mean.
Thirty eight, what'd you say?
Thirty eight point four seven six is our current. Current stats.
Okay.
You get that.
That's. That's just the general. And now it's thirty eight.
Did that matter? Jeez, the guy that's related, that is married to Matt's attorney, she's a captivator.
Then I know it's right.
That's what I'm saying, he's a captain, she's not saying.
A point seven five one. Darn it, didn't get it, at least. So. So you remember what we sent out last year when we said we were exceeding the revenue rate last year?
We worked on it afterwards, so.
Right, yeah. That's what this is. Sixty eight turn. Yeah, one oh two.
This increase, how much is that? That one or two?
Okay, let's see.
So the tax levy currently is two million, seven hundred thirty one thousand, thirty two thousand on this budget, last year you did two million, one hundred and seven thousand. If you want to do dollar to dollar.
Two percent is only eight dollar, eight hundred and thirty three dollars. That's almost, that's a five thousand.
We're gonna keep that, that was the one in the back mills.
Well, that's what we.
Ask her when she gets.
Discuss the fact of, I think, when they plug the whole, the public with that.
I mean, if they have more help.
Yeah.
Right. Okay, well, so, I certainly. This one, because that's what they've been doing, but then they.
It has been, been terms.
Year to get it down, so. I assume they're gonna do that, but to some extent, based on outlook so far.
I think it would be on.
There's a detention.
Governor would be up in state twenty six.
Good. Bringing in money, right? Got your money, you're spending it, right?
Be a super. Looking at everything, we'll see a bunch of. Seems very interesting.
So.
Please.
You're the date to, on the detention.
Yeah.
She was with that large, that increase.
I think she decreased last year.
And they're done. So then the month of trade, right, that we done last week?
Yeah, we just stayed there, elections, so it was two years ago, we decreased it, because we just had city small, it's like every three years, but no, I don't, I didn't see her, or she, so.
Okay. I feel like.
See. Because of that, so.
What's two? Or with the forty one two seventy?
Eight hundred.
That's the ten.
Yeah, that's.
Add that forty one two seventy four. I feel like round that to forty, forty three, maybe.
Cause you're opposite in four years. You're here. So do you?
She gets back, we're gonna ask her what the. She made up a better exit.
Not anymore.
Sixty four.
This is this year's time to save. Ones that I have, I don't have everybody's. I hired one that are seeing.
Just to see the rest. Make sure. That's your, make sure. Hey, that's your city. Get it. And people up that way.
Throw the water down. Honey, on your, the election. Sure. On your salary.
Six E. Six. Yeah, that's.
The election. The election.
What do you think of election next? The governor? Or term now?
Yes. The next.
This is.
Next fall is, right, could be the governor. Midterms. And G.
G.
Not this year.
He just, he just got back in.
Yeah, not this year.
Forgot, Nate, can I go over to sign up?
So we're. I did, I sent your reply this morning, the, it's the County Clerks Association that basically generated that recommendation. I called over, I think that's what everybody's doing, that company has sent those requests out to every single county. So just go ahead and do that for now, because you're, you're gonna have. Fifty hours.
In, in, in that, that may very well be the, yeah, right, well, that's, I don't know that anybody does, just show me over there. And that, that's why I think it, it, they may be researching for multiple states. So, but, but yeah, it's a really good firm, and they have made that request of every single county, so. Yeah, I did spend some time looking into it. But. Yeah, I mean, if you did, the time it would take to, to go through and produce everything that they were.
Two percent up here, this is the breakdown. This is for clerks. The election. To make it say. Actional approach is sixty-five percent. And that first one. Sixty-five election, that's the right.
Go ahead and say, a little wider, so.
Okay, it's a eight, sixty-five percent of the election, thirty-five percent of the term.
Sixty-five of the election?
Sixty-one. Sixty-five percent of the election.
Or, right? We'd be saying sixty-five percent of the time is spent on election.
Yeah, okay, so it's clear, yeah.
I'll make a motion, we're going to executive session for non-elected personnel until ten fifty-one. With the. Clerk and attorney. Been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion care.
You ready?
Yeah.
Just use the change on the inch, please.
All right, general. We're just there, I think. For now. Rosenbridge. Page eight.
Just to bump it down a bit. Utilize some of, and some of that can come. If we have, yeah, we still have the. Multi-year capital improvement, the heat. Making some things more project-based. That will drive that, that will drive that, what we're asking for there, I think.
We're looking at the commodities. Going that drop, let's. Knock that down to. Nine hundred and fifteen thousand. Be able to use some other money out of some different funds with special projects and that.
Utilize that, some of that multi-year capital improvement for some specific projects that we've been talking about. Nine fifteen.
Nine fifteen. You have his.
Yeah.
Oh, what, thank you. All over the board. Maybe FEMA.
I know, it's slow down.
It's the second half of the year, it's easy. No, yeah. I could go get, Tommy likes to talk.
I did for right now, I think.
With that reduction, you would be levying one million, eight hundred ninety-two thousand of tax last year for the spend you levied one million, five hundred and ninety-three thousand. Part of that is because his carryover was, was significantly lower than what we thought it was gonna be. He was pretty good about knowing the budget and transferring, so that may have been a very planned happening. I think we, but, or last year, he turned over three hundred and thirty-five thousand, and this year it was only like twelve thousand, so. I think so, and part of that was probably that two hundred and thirty-five thousand that you got for FEMA. But regardless, it still went down a hundred thousand, so to continue that same spending level, you're gonna have to recover that hundred thousand. Plus what you left from last year, plus the additional, so you're fighting several different things.
Where does that take the, where does that put the actual mill at?
Right now, it's your seventy point eight four four, and R and R is fifty-eight point three four five, so you're functionally twelve and a half.
Back four.
Oh, no, that's just. It was on his worksheet, it's thirty, last month, right?
Just wondering where is that setting at the end of the day? You got fifty-six percent?
Lot of numbers. Lot of numbers, lot of words.
Budget copy number two.
Yeah.
I find. Summer health. Think it's just her.
We're just looking on where it's at to date. But that's really hard to, we can't have projects, and it might have, it's been a lot of projects, so.
Some of that too, is, we had taken, we had made an increase at one point, that's one of our, wage increases, to also make room for one addition, for an additional employee. So that's just a conversation that we need to probably have again, to see where we're at with that, right? That's always kind of cool, having one in the line. Well. A lot of that was getting back to. You know. That's where it should be, and. So that might reflect that, I think that's what I should say.
Oh, yeah. Cindy, could you get us a. Send us a copy of what we've done? Changes in that? Want a new, what we've done, yeah.
You wanna print it out again? Can I just walk down and have to redo it?
Just for us to take with us.
Yeah. We can look at.
We don't have to have it right now.
Okay, I'm not ready, all right. We had a discussion, we just increased capers, caping up, it's a little bit more expensive, so I don't.
Well. Today for the. We've gotta make our decision today to exceed the revenue neutral rate. That's, so we're gonna, we're still gonna be working on it. Those things are gonna have to come down.
Right, and we, we, we can always resolve to do that and not exceed it, so we should do that anyway.
Yeah.
Resolve to not exceed, right?
We can resolve to exceed the revenue neutral and then not exceed, and so I'm saying we should.
Yeah, no, we're not, we're not.
Does that have to have a number?
Yes.
When we, so the.
The first year, the first year, didn't remember, the first year, just said, you're gonna go over, but since then, it's got, it's nailed it down.
Right now, we have it at seventy. Where is it?
Seventy point eight four four. 70.844.
Where it was, and go back to that last number.
Yeah.
To move things down, all right, can you? One last change here, take the, what we changed on the commodities from.
Rosenbridge.
Rosenbridge, put that back to where it was.
To 930?
Yeah. And then you use that new.
71.062. Which is 12.717 over the RNR rate. And would get you. 900,000, 902,940, so 93,000 dollars more than what you levied last year. 93,000, 12.7 mils higher. On your publication, it puts the amount of tax dollars to that taxpayer too, right? Not just the letter, it equates it to dollars.
You just, you just need the mill and the amount of tax dollars.
Actually, does publication break it down back then, or the, I don't think it does, or the mailing, I didn't think so, yeah. That's what I was thinking, just to overlook on.
We mail that out.
Yeah.
Make a motion. That we will exceed the revenue neutral rate of 58.345. With the number of 71.062.
Not actually exceeding it today, intending to.
Intending, thank you. Tend to exceed the neutral, revenue neutral rate.
Yes, it is attached, I might have it hidden, but it's there.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Cindy.
Thanks, I will have Tiffany print keys off and we go down there.
Five minutes with her before she leaves. Need to quick five minutes session with her. For. It's, it's more about, uh. It's trying to be a mitigation, well, that, yeah, there you go. Make your motion going to session for five minutes.
That Cindy remained.
With Cindy remained. 13, sorry.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye. No action taken.
In con, that is, that was for anticipation potential litigation, so mitigation potential.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Do I have the floor?
You have.
I'm not really even certain that this is the place to begin the discussion, but since working on the third floor and having many or most of the tourists that come for a self-guided tour come right up to my office, I have seen what I believe to be an opportunity to increase the experience of the courthouse tourist. People get to the third floor and kind of look around confused and aren't sure what to do. I was hoping that you might be able to direct me to maybe who I could speak with if there was someone other than Tony, or if I should start with Tony.
Tony Snyder.
Yeah, Tony Snyder, too, thank you. For maybe some signage, also there has been a longstanding mystery since Mr. Henderson and I started as to the purpose of General Pershing who hangs about our wall. Oh, he belongs, we just don't know why he belongs. Anyway, I assume it's a tourism thing, but yet because the building is a historical building, I don't know if there's rules, regulations, someone I should seek out, I wanted to bring it to your attention.
All right, thanks.
Also like to talk about walking off the third floor from tourism.
Part of the, that's the biggest.
Part of the experience, I'm just kidding, lovely.
I, I suggest that you reach out to Tony first, because I know there's probably been lots of different talks about something similar and then come back to us with the proposal.
Okay.
Biggest part of that proposal will be the bottom line.
Oh, money?
What it costs.
Well, after the prior discussion, I know that handing out money is probably high on your list of.
Jacob spent $10,000.
Fantastic, so I'll stop, I'll talk to Jacob, okay, that's it.
All right.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
No, I got nothing.
You got nothing. I just want to talk to you for a few minutes, I want to thank you for me being here for 14 years. I've worked in every office but the treasurer's office. I've enjoyed helping people, like when they want to find where great grandma's house was and where their land was and all that stuff. And I do know that Kathy has the right to hire and fire anyone she wants in her office, that's her privilege as the register of deeds. She had two documents she wanted me to sign and return, which I have not and I will not. But what, one of the statements in this one letter was that I'm incompetent in my job. And I wanted to show you the two letters and all my evaluations where the last one states that is, Sherry's always willing to go the extra mile to help a customer needing help they need starting in 2025, a longevity pay increase has gone into effect. And besides that, she gave me another 3%, keep up the good work, good job. And so I wanted you guys to see those. But I want to tell you, in the, in the one letter, it says I, that I was incompetent because of to a deed that came across my desk. I was not incompetent. A deed with an SVQ, sales validation questionnaire came over on, through the computer, e-recording, so we don't have the original. This is while Kathy was on vacation. And the way they come in, they come into our office, we record them, we check for, to make sure it's a recordable document, but we don't go into looking and seeing if the legals are correct. There is a legal there, okay, we do it. So I have to copy it off, send it down to the front to get, to get the copies printed. And as I came back, I gave the copies to the appraiser's office and said, you know, here's a deed and an SVQ that came in, no problem. I go back and now I'd have to put them into the track books, type them in, no problem. A lot of times I'll look and see how long the person has owned the property or whatever, I couldn't find the seller's name anywhere. So I went back to my desk, got on the appraiser's site and looked, and in the legal, it was block, some lots in Block 15 Cottonwood Falls, it should have been North Cottonwood Falls. So I, it was from Moon Title, I called Brian, I told him what was wrong. Brian had, records a lot, e-recording, he makes mistakes quite frequently. And he deals with other registered deeds that have the same program we do, so he knows what we can do to fix things, how he can get things fixed. And he said, well, you voided, I said, no, he said, well, could I just type in, and, and north on the SVQ and the, and the deed and email them to you and you replace them and, and re-scan them into the computer? I said, let me find out. So I called Kathy and I told her exactly what I, what he wanted me to do, she has done it for him before. So I really knew it was all right, but I just wanted to double check, you know, that it was still okay to do that. No problem, yeah, go ahead and do that. So I did it, and I, as soon as I talked to her, I walked back over to the appraiser's office, I said, that legal that came across was wrong, you guys will have to pitch that and I'll, I'll bring you the corrected one shortly. He emails it to me, I re-scan it in, I put it in the track books and I give the appraiser the new copy and I pitched ours, I put it in those shredder box, because that's what you do with them. I have a good reputation here, I did not commit fraud. I followed protocol, I even talked to Kathy. So I really don't appreciate, and I don't want her saying that she fired me for, because I'm incompetent to do my job. Because that's not the way it was, I did it correctly, I did it according to her, and when I, when she came to me. And when she came to me and brought them to me last Wednesday, she said it was fraud. I said, Kathy, they were supposed to be, the first one you throw away, you throw away the old copy. And I said, and I called you, and she said, well, I didn't understand what you were talking about. I'm not calling her a liar, but I'm just saying that she told me that I could do it, she had done it in the past. So I have not committed fraud, and I am not incompetent. And I want my record here to state that, that I, I want my good record reinstalled. I don't appreciate it at all. And I would like to go into executive session for non-elected personnel for about 10 or 15 minutes, please. Connie, you stay here, please.
All right. That's it to you guys.
That's fine.
If that's what we're talking about, if we're.
Yeah, we're talking about non-elected personnel.
Thanks.
I'll make a motion, we go into executive session for 10 minutes, reconvene at 11:35.
You can stay, oh, yeah.
No, he's. For non-elected personnel with the attorney and clerk present, hand Sherri Wells. It's been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye. Motion carries. No action taken.
Hey, now I do that.
Oh.
This is our updated.
Sir.
I didn't get back the papers that I gave you during that executive session.
I should mark that you're an actor.
Yeah.
I, I've got a. I tend to look at the chimneys, like, you know, where we repainted.
you know, where we repainted the courtroom, like, all the problems in the building, like, paint-wise are all associated with the six chimneys that are in the building. I saw them on the third floor, backside here where the chimney is, you can see, you know, that wall is, yeah. Waters come through, down through there, potentially even maybe a little more, I don't know. We've repainted the courtroom a couple of times and same thing, it's, it's all, so I actually got up there this weekend and got up into the attic where the chimneys are. There's definitely, I just, I need a professional to look at it and start the conversation.
Must be where the birds come from.
That's it. So anyway, I just wanted to let you get a know-it-all. I do have that deal with tomorrow. You can get up in there with me and take a look at that.
Thank you. There's somebody that worked on this chimney. That's been...
Well, some of them up there on the inside, they've used cinder blocks to fill gaps in the bricks and so certainly in regards to historical value, I'm sure something can be done better than what has been done already. So.
Big one is, is that the only one that's still in use with the boiler?
Yeah, that's it.
I think the rest of them are all sealed on top or...
But the problem is the water down from the chimney and down. It's no building.
No building. So question is, because I had an old house here in town, the guttering on the roof, how does that, is it?
I feel like there's a couple big pipes that come down, so it comes to a...
It's not like a trough of bent copper or whatever that goes around.
Kind of, it's...
Like a flange. Then the drain, the tubes go down in the wall?
No, they go on the outside and then here to the, to the drainage, drains into the city.
Because they're like, they're through down, this one called Wilson House by the grade school.
Yeah.
And the guttering and in the wall, it's rotting, it's out of the way.
Right. Yeah, these are on the outside because of the eaves come out far enough.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. We'll do a field trip, man. Put that down. August 11th.
August 11th.
Roof filter. You going with us? Yes, proxy?
It's a tip on the ground.
She can fly the drone. I'd grant fly the drone as well.
Sure, the attic will be really nice on August 11th.
All right. Well, thank you everybody. See you in a while.
Joy.
Pittsburgh. Steelers training camp.
Oh my goodness.
Friday night lights. We're gonna go to a Detroit Tigers game, just because we haven't been there to Detroit.
I guess, I guess it's better in Dallas, right?
Yeah. Yeah, I got it. I'll make a motion to the chair.
Thanks.
This move is seconded in all my favor.
Aye.